Scott.
Here.
Okay, we have a presentation tonight from Mr. Jerry Parks. And after this, we won't have to worry about how we're gonna pay our bills ever again.
We've got it covered.[111.11][111.11](Laughter). I'm Jerry Parks, 2729 South Main, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Community Foundation of Des Moines County. Community foundations were authorized by the Iowa Legislature, and they're set up to encourage people to use charitable, their charitable giving to strengthen their own communities. The Community Foundation of Des Moines County was started in 2007, so it's fairly new. In 2010, a strategic visioning session was held in which thirty-five to forty members from various segments of the community got together and brainstormed and came up with some strategic initiatives, some goals for the Community Foundation. The two that the foundation accepted and decided to work on are, number one, projects which encourage people to come here, visit here, stay here, and live here. And it could be infrastructure, it could be events, anything that attracts people and gets them to, makes the community more attractive. And then the second initiative was that Des Moines County would have a skilled and trained workforce. And so we have, you know, some things, some things that we've worked on in that respect. Community foundations work as endowments, which means money that's given stays there. It never, it's never used up. Each year, the interest or the earnings off whatever money is in there gets, can be dispersed for projects up to a certain amount. So anybody who gives to a community foundation, that your money stays there forever.
Awesome.
Before he died, Benjamin Franklin set up two endowments, one for the city of Boston and one for the city of Philadelphia. Those endowments operate just like a community foundation. The principal never, never leaves, and it just keeps growing year after year. And those, those two endowments are still in effect and are now worth many millions of dollars, obviously, because it's been quite a while since Benjamin Franklin was around. The Community Foundation this year, we have two parts to the foundation. We have the Community Impact Fund, which is, we hope is gonna be as large someday as the Witty Foundation, and would operate the same way. Money from that fund would be used to finance projects of value in Des Moines County. The second part is, other charitable organizations can have an account at the Community Foundation. And under the legislature's rules, if you donate, let's say to Hope Haven, which has an account with the foundation, if you donate money to Hope Haven, you receive a 25% tax credit on your Iowa taxes, which is, you know, very advantageous, very tax advantage. So I want to, real briefly, read you a list for the City Council and all members of the audience. These are the funds, the funds that are on account with this Community Foundation and whose, whose contributions would qualify for the tax credit. The Burlington Education Foundation, the Notre Dame Foundation Fund, the Des Moines County Historical Society Endowment, Friends of the Burlington Public Library Foundation, the Fund for Hope Haven, the Minneapolis Schools Foundation, Planned Parenthood of the Heartland Endowment, the SCC Precedent Circle Endowment, the Heritage Trust for Preservation and Restor, Restoration of Historic Burlington Endowment, Young House Family Services Endowment, and the Burlington Lightscape Endowment. So if any of those are the subjects of your past charitable giving, if you give in the future, you may want to direct that it be, that that money be sent to their, that particular organization's account with the Community Foundation. So this group, at the moment, we have our community, our community account, our community fund, it's called the Community Impact Fund. And since we are fairly new, it's not huge, it's running about eighty thousand dollars right now. And this year, we decided to take the earnings from that and make a dispersment in accord with our strategic vision. So we voted to disburse five hundred dollars to the City Councils of the five incorporated cities of Des Moines County. And the other, the other thing we decided to do is make a pledge to the SCC Building the Dream Foundation, so to touch on both of our strategic, strategic initiatives. We would like the money to be used for anything in the city. Could be a project, it could be infrastructure, it could be an event, anything that attracts people to Burlington, that improves the appearance of the community. You know, it's, it's kind of at your discretion where you place the money. Hopefully, you know, the sewer, sewer separation, maybe not, you know, that's, I don't think, I don't think that's gonna attract anybody here.
Gee, Jerry, come on.
But anything that encourages people to come, to come here, visit, and stay and live here. So with that, I'd like to present this check for five hundred dollars to Mayor McCambell and the city of Burlington.
Awesome. I'll tell you what, we sure appreciate that.
Thank you.[415.41][415.41](Applause).
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jerry.
You gonna speak?
At this time, on the agenda, we have the consent agenda. All items listed under Item One Consent Agenda, having been discussed, are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items, and if a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent agenda tonight is miscellaneous, and finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer liquor, wine and cigarettes, reports and bonds. One resolution approving purchase of a 2016 F-550 truck with utility box for public works, streets division. We have three public hearings set for February first, 2016. The first is a consideration of an ordinance residing the property locally known as 509 Melrose Court from R2 Single Family Residential to C2 General Commercial Zoning District. The second is a consideration of an ordinance, amending ordinance number 3166 and ordinance number 3105 by eliminating the requirements for a landscape buffer. The third is a consideration of plans and specifications for the 2016 HMA resurfacing of Memorial Park Road and Plank Road Project in the city of Burlington, Iowa. And we have four appointments. Mayor Proton Davidson.
Yes, thank you, your mayor. Your honor, we have four reappointments to boards and commissions. Construction Board of Appeals, Tim Brown, for a three-year term. Human Rights Commission, J.R. Ritters, for a three-year term. Sports Authority, Bob Fleming, for a two-year term. And the Zoning Board of Adjustment, Diane LaRue Chubb, for a five-year term. And we do have some vacancies on boards and commissions. For those who might be interested, if you go to BurlingtonIowa.org, under the government heading, look at Boards and Commissions, you'll see some that have vacancies, and we entertain applications for those. And we want to thank all those who help us with boards and commissions.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these removed from the consent agenda? I see none. Counsel?
None for me.
Can I get a motion?
I move to approve all this under Item One Consent Agenda.
Second.
Move down second, and let's have a vote. Kathleen.
Wilson.
Hi.
Davidson.
Hi.
Lemmy.
Hi.
McCambell.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi.
I say it. Next, we have an ordinance?
Yes, I have an ordinance for final adoption of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of alley right-of-way located south of the properties at 623 and 627 Acres Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Mr. Tisland.
No changes from previous meetings on this. Summary request was made by the property owner at 627 Acres to vacate the alleyway. They desire to have access off of the alley, private drive serving their property at 627. Currently, it has a shared drive with 623, and they would like to have each, each property having their own individual drive instead of having the shared drive. The other property owners along the alley were contacted and agreed that they would be interested in purchasing the alley if it was vacated, split evenly among the properties to the north and south. Other than 627 would be, get the entire sixteen feet. For the remaining portion, each side would get eight feet. This went to the Planning Commission on October 20th, and they voted five to zero to recommend approval of the vacating of the alley based on the status as a dead-end, untraveled alley, along with desire of ownership and maintenance of the alley by the applicant with the required sewer utilities within the alley. I guess a little more closer detail showing the alley here. Currently, the alley, this is an entire public alley right-of-way. It's only used by the property owners on the north side of the alley adjacent to Acres, and it dead-ends for travel way at the property at 629 Acres. Their request would be to, by the property owner, to vacate behind 627 and put in a, continue the alley for a private driveway at that point. If you've been out there, I have a photo here as well. It does drop off. It's kind of hard to see, a little dark here, but the end of the traveled portion is this gravel area here. It does drop off a little bit, so there'd be quite a slope there for the individual to the east, but they could grade it, working with the adjacent property owner to provide access to their property. A couple of concerns would be from the owner, our property owner at 629 is what to do with the snow removal. Currently, they just push it to the end of the alley, which is in the right-of-way. They'd have to work with the new property if this was vacated with that property owner. It is wooded and ravine all to the south. And then the other concern was the travel, additional travel through the alley right-of-way. One adjacent property would have access to it, the other properties wouldn't have access because it would, would no longer be a public alley. Whether this is vacated or not, since it is a public right-of-way, they could have access off the alley now. They would have to extend the alley, grade and extend the alley, and then park on the rear portion of their property. So whether it's vacated or not, they could have access. This would just give them responsibility for maintenance and be at their cost on, on this property.
Thank you.
That, if you have any additional questions, I can try and answer them as well.
Is there anybody from the audience that has any additional questions?
Greg Martin, 629 Acres Street. Good evening, mayor, council. I just have one question on the snow removal. What would we, would we, where would we put our snow removal? And then my other question, if this is passed, would that have to be brought up to city code? The part that would go into her, Ms. Parker's backyard, or would she just be able to throw some rock down and drive right down there?
I don't think anybody's driving down that.
Right now, there's, no, there isn't, but I'm saying if this is passed tonight, is there gotta be, brought up to city code even with the alley that is now? Or would she just be able, Ms. Parker, just be able to throw some rock down and just drive up the hill? Once it rains, the rock would all wash away, or? That's just my concern.
Eric, what's the requirements for, from, from the code's perspective for what she wants to do?
There's no code on the grade from our perspective. Our code does allow gravel on existing gravel alleys, you can gravel a parking area off that. If she were to have a driveway come off of Acres Street, it would have to be fully paved as a new driveway, but our code, we do allow gravel alleys and do allow parking off of gravel alleys to be parked, or gravel for the first twenty feet. It can't extend all the way through a property, but, and there's not a code that I'm aware of that says you have to grade it level the entire length on her back property. It could have a slope, there would be some issues for her getting access or traveling that portion, but that would be up to her.
Okay. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else from the audience, any questions or concerns? Counsel, you guys have any other questions or concerns on this?
I don't.
I would just say that it's, it's gonna be a challenge for Ms. Parker, but she, she would be able to do it whether we sell it to her or not. I don't, I would rather not have the responsibility of the property, so I don't want them to sell it to her.
I can't see any reason why not to it, it makes sense to me. Do you guys have any? Kathleen, let's go ahead and get a vote on that. This is, this is, this will be the final, this will be the final vote on this.
Wilson.
Hi.
Davidson.
Hi.
Lemmy.
Hi.
McCambells.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi.
Okay. All right, we already, this resolution, we already introduced it and seconded at the, at the last meeting, and the only thing that was left to do on this was a discussion and vote, so. Mr. Tisland, can you give us what information?
And I, I was at the last meeting, what was discussed, but Chicken Dance has substantially completed their work on this project. There has been some discussion about some payments by the property owners. Somewhat aside from Chicken Dance, they have completed the work that is required, or substantially completed. We are holding their retention money for thirty days in relation to the project for any liens or any claims that come up, anything that comes forward from the property owners for the work that was required to be completed. But that, again, is for the construction, not for anything related to engineering or architecture for the project or administration of the project. This relates to the construction on the project.
This was tabled two meetings ago. The purpose for that, the request came from Councilwoman Anderson at the time, pending some closure in regards to the downtown property owners that were impacted by this project, some questions about why the billing was being done the way that it was. I think there's still some concerns from the property owners, there have been a couple of meetings held. But the bills that are still, that there's some concerns about would have to do with the engineering or architectural fees, not with Chicken Dance. This, we're recommending that the item that had come into question, be, that the city cover that, that was a general insurance that was on the original bill but never got distributed out to the individual property owners. There are no reasons why we'd want to hold up payment to Chicken Dance. They have completed the work, and it's all been satisfactory and per the terms of the contract.
Was there, was there, were they over in, in their, over their estimate?
You know, the, it's different than the, the original bid was significantly higher than the, than the engineer's estimate of probable cost. When they went through that process, some of the individual property owners made adjustments to what their project was, the scope of work to be done, to try to get, minimize the amount of work to be done. You had other properties where you had property owners who added additional work beyond what the original scope was, so we had some change orders along the way. So it's kind of hard to say. It's, this, the overall cost, I think, Eric, be accurate, is higher than what was the original estimate, but I'm not sure if it's higher than the original bid amount.
Yeah, it's about two-hundred thousand dollars less than the original bid amount based on that value engineering down of the project. So the actual construction cost, no one has any concerns of the costs associated with what, the work that was done. Their concerns was some of the architectural fees that came in after the fact.
And when it comes to the architectural fees, the discussion that was had with the property owners had to do with, you know, the, the original contracted amount for those fees was in the ninety-some thousand range.
About a hundred thousand.
And ended up, ended up being closer to a hundred and fifty, a hundred and forty-five thousand. And a lot of that had to do with their additional work that was associated with some of the specific change orders with, with individual projects. Some of it was trying to make some adjustments to the overall, just scope of work to be done, trying to get the cost down because they were so much higher than what they had originally been. And, you know, some of the concern from the property owners was they didn't realize the engineering fees were gonna be up higher, and neither did we until we got them. It was just how the project went with the extra work that they put in, and that's...
Are those increases being absorbed by everybody, or is it?
It's on a prorata basis. The, the costs that were associated with, that could be line itemed out to an individual property owner were put to those individual property owners. The remainder was done on a proportion of the overall bid cost that an individual property had.
What is the city's additional cost?
Our original cost was sixty, what we committed to was sixty thousand. I think that our project with the senior center came in sixty-three.
Yeah, a little over sixty-two, I think, between sixty-two, five, sixty-three.
And then for us to take on, the, the item in question that didn't get billed out was the general conditions, is a twenty thousand dollar lump sum amount that we're recommending that we take on. And the biggest reason is, we, when the cost came in so much higher on the original bid with this project, we talked, we gave every property owner the chance to look at, do they want to take on those costs, or do they want to try to work down their overall project costs by doing some changes to the work to be done? And a lot of them did change it down, but we didn't give them the proper, we didn't give them the proper number to know what they were working off of when we didn't distribute out that cost. So it's just hard to distribute out to them the costs that we didn't, even though it really is rightly the property owners, we didn't discuss it with them and give them a chance to really adequately do what they otherwise might have done to try to work their costs down.
Where do you put this into the budget?
Recommendation is out of local option sales tax. The other source that could be talked about is the general fund, but, and this, the, where this would come out of with, even with local option sales tax, the purposes for what it can be used for, one of those is, is general economic development projects for the city, and this falls under that purview.
Is there, no funding in TIF to?
You could certify this as a TIF debt project. I don't, I hate to add a project of twenty thousand dollars to certify that as debt just for, just because we can. I mean, we, it is, we could adjust the TIF plan, certify this debt and get reimbursed for it.
But that's not your recommendation?
But that's not my recommendation, just to cover it.
I accept your reservation, or your recommendation. We got a vote on it, or what do we do?
Do you guys have any other questions?
We're, we're paying Chicken Dance twenty thousand more.
It's part of the original bid.
That's not part of this. They were paid, that was their first pay invoice, was the twenty thousand. It just wasn't distributed to all the property owners at that time, based on their pay apps.
I see, I see what you're saying.
But there is an additional twenty thousand dollars going out, that's going to...
No. The twenty thousand was in their original bid, it was paid in their first payout.
We just didn't disperse it out.
It just wasn't dispersed out on the ticket items that each property got when they first got their cost estimates.
Was that an oversight on our part or on the administration part?
Well, you know, it's our part. And really, what, and this is, we've had some internal discussions on this. We paid Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission twenty-five thousand dollars to do grant administration, but we didn't have them do this, this billing aspect. And we want to make sure as we do further projects that if we're gonna have them do grant administration, they're gonna, we want them to do the full, the full spectrum of it. And that, you know, I don't know how that was originally set up, that was back in 2012.
Yeah.
And what we do, for example, with our housing rehab projects, with the CDBG funds that we have for, for those, we provide a local, a local match on those, but they do the, Southeast Iowa does the grant administration. When that happens, and they're doing an individual property and haven't bidden it out and getting, figuring out what the contribution is from the individual property owner towards the cost of a project, they do all the billings, they do all the bidding, it's all in their hands. We do have to verify and have all the pay orders come through us, make sure that we hold them accountable, that, yeah, they have good documentation on it, but they're the ones that do all the arrangements. And in the future, if we have a project like this, we'd like to make sure that we're following that same kind of structure. If we're gonna do it internally, we need to have a better system where we're doing the full grant administration. But we just, you know, as we've talked about it, we don't have someone on staff who's really set up to, to do that. The closest we have is Charlie, and asking Charlie Nichols to do that in an, into an area where you're asking to do some more accounting details, that's really not his background. And it's just gonna lead to this kind of an issue coming up.
So you feel confident that we won't have to, that we won't have to, that we won't run into another issue like this again in the future?
Confident that we won't, we'll always run into issues. I, I think that with this, we, if we do another project like this, we will set it up differently to try to avoid this. Again, I'd like to have Southeast Iowa, if they're gonna do the grant administration, do the full thing.
That makes sense.
There are too many people that have different, divided responsibilities on this.
Okay. Is there anybody that has any questions from the audience? Okay. Are you guys satisfied?
I am.
Kathleen, let's take a vote on that.
Wilson.
Hi.
Davidson.
Hi.
Lemmy.
Hi.
McCambell.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi.
Okay. At this time, we will entertain comments from the audience. Is there one? Okay. All right then, congratulations to you, by the way. Mr. Tisland, do you have anything tonight? Councilwoman Wilson, do you have anything tonight?
Um, I do. We recently have a link so we can now, you know, livestream these videos and also look at older ones going from now on. And I think that's important for everyone, everyone to see. Just go to, you know, BurlingtonIowa.org, go down, there's a link, it says videos, agendas, and minutes, and it'll be the first link. So I think that's really great that we've got that up there now.
Awesome.
I agree.
Councilman Scott?
Nothing to know, your honor.
Okay. Tonight, my only question is, why are we, why isn't Martin Luther King Day a holiday? Well, I know that it is, but how come we're not? How come we're not recognizing it?
So our holidays, I think, have always been set by the union contracts, so it would be a negotiated item, as far as I know, with the unions. And we do have one union, AFSME, has requested that in their initial proposal for us to add that holiday. So currently, right now, we have ten holidays. I don't know if other cities have eleven if they add that day, or, you know, I thought ten was about the going rate for holidays for cities. So maybe some cities have Martin Luther King Day, but maybe they don't have President's Day, or they don't have Veterans' Day. Those are the three holidays that really aren't consistent, city to city, those three holidays. The rest of them, we almost all have the same holidays. So if we would add Martin Luther King, that would make the city have ten or eleven paid holidays, so...
But it's a, it's a national, I mean, do we pick and choose? I mean, is that how, how does that, how does that work prior to that? I mean...
What, and what she's getting at, the three holidays that typically are the pick and choo, well, there's four. The day after Thanksgiving isn't necessarily always given.
Right.
Veterans' Day and President's Day. And President's Day is the one that in most communities that I've been, isn't recognized. But do you want to, are you wanting to negotiate to change, or are you wanting to negotiate to just add, give them an extra day off?
I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out how come we don't, if it's a national holiday...
It's been what's been negot, it's been what's been negotiated, is the long and short of it. And that's up to you, and through the union contract process, do you want to?
So it's never been, it's never been from the time that it's been a holiday? Nobody's ever acknowledged Martin Luther King Day?
Kathleen, do you know, you've been here the longest.
You mean for city employees? No, it has not been.
The city council in the past has foregone the meeting and held it on Tuesdays, but that was changed three or four years ago. I wasn't on the council at the time, but it was, as I recall, but it was, um, because we were still able to, well, we were still, we were still able to make the... we were still able to, well, we were still, we were still able to make the special event that they held back then, but it was, we couldn't start council meetings on that Saturday.
It was on a different night. We didn't have a conflict with council meetings with their celebration because it wasn't on Monday night previously. Then they recently have changed it to a Monday night.
I see. It's been on a Monday since I've been.
We changed the council meeting. We were on, meeting on Tuesdays.
I, I just remember we didn't have a conflict for some reason. But, but since it's not a recognized vacation day for employees, I didn't see how we could justify not meeting as a council for that reason, too. That was part of my reasoning for that.
I believe for 10 years, we had meetings on Tuesdays during Martin Luther King.
I just, if it's a national holiday, I mean, I'd like to be able to enjoy the holiday. And I don't think, I don't know, I don't think we should be picking and choosing. I mean, then, you know, where's, where do we draw the line on that?
So we give 13, 14 holidays?
I'm just, again, I'm just trying to get some questions here on how come it's Martin Luther King Day and we're, and City Hall was open and the mill wasn't running and we got a meeting?
Same thing happens on Veterans' Day. That's what you're saying.
Veterans' Day, is everything shut down?
At the city, we're shut down, but.
Is the, doesn't the mill run on Veterans' Day?
No, I don't think so. I think that's a holiday.
It is all tied to the union contract.
I know the schools don't shut down that day. I don't think any schools shut down for Veterans' Day.
No, I'm sure they don't. So it's a union negotiated thing. But whether you have a city council meeting or not, I guess is a different issue, I suppose.
Councilwoman, or Mayor Proton Davidson?
I happened to be in the office the other day when they were opening bids for the depot. That was an interesting time, so I was glad I was there. It'll be interesting when Steve has his report and we get the bids back on that. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Councilman Lemmy?
Nothing at this time.
City manager.
We're doing those bids as a special meeting at the beginning of next week's work session.
Right. Correct. And award contract.
We do have a budget meeting on Thursday. I think I sent to the council the two different trips to the, to Des Moines for legislative days, one to chambers and the other the leagues. If you wanted to participate in either of those, just make sure you let Katie know, and she'll make all the arrangements for that. Jim, did you attend Exen Issues this, this time?
I did not.
Yeah. And I don't really have anything else for tonight, so.
Okay.
I figured it was early in the session, so.
If there's nothing else, we should.
Your Honor, I move that we adjourn this meeting at this time.
Give a second.
Second.
See how I added a little at the end there?
That was nice. That was a nice touch. Kathleen?
Wilson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Lemmy.
Aye.
McCamell.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Thank you very much.